Yeah.
No, maybe.
Okay.
You're thirty seconds.
I gotta revise the agenda.
Oh, not revised.
Oh, okay. It's just so laid out, yeah, that's why.
Oh, no, I think we just also labeled it out.
You should.
Okay.
All the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Delta Township Planning Commission to order if everyone will rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would call the role, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, we'll call. Chairman Doug Kudinsky.
Here.
Vice Chair Mary Anna Hunt Proctor.
Present.
Bob Walden, present. Wendy Bradley.
Wendy will be absent tonight.
Mike Madoff.
Mr. Madoff was all, we haven't heard from him, right?
Commissioner Mudry.
Here.
Commissioner Bob McConnell.
Present.
Commissioner Rachel Elzinga.
We have not heard from Commissioner Elzinga.
And Commissioner David O.
Here.
Welcome. We have a forum.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the agenda. If everyone has had a chance to look at it, do have a motion.
And move the agenda.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes from the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Planning Commission.
Chair move approval.
Support. Any comments, additions, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Minutes are approved. We have no correspondence. Uh, we have no old business. So that brings us to public hearings. Would you introduce the first item, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, special land use permit number P S L two zero two five dash zero zero four. Around Tuitt Services, Inc.
Oh, we're gonna have Hope is gonna present this case tonight. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, tonight we have Damian Lindsay with us. Um, he has applied for a special land use permit to establish a, an A D U, an accessory dwelling unit at his property at six one one seven Willow Highway. He would like to turn the existing attached garage uh into a living space for his mother. It is approximately five hundred and thirty six square feet. Um, the, the property in and of itself is almost an acre. It's point four or five acre property located on Willow, on the very far um corner of East Willow Highway, near the township's western border. Did I say that right? Okay. Sorry. Uh, in the Forest Hills subdivision and is zoned R B, which is low density residential. The one thousand six hundred and forty three square foot house was built in nineteen sixty five. Accessory dwelling units are allowed in the R B zoning districts by approval of an S L U P. The zoning ordinance defines an A D U as a dwelling unit attached to a principal dwelling, which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons and includes permanent provisions for living. Such as sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. The A D U proposed by the applicant will be convert, will be a converted five hundred and thirty six square foot garage attached to the primary dwelling. Uh, that will include a bedroom. Switch. That will include a bedroom, living area, kitchen, and a bathroom for his mother. Okay. All of. There we go. No.
And then I've got a photo waiting, so let's get the, yeah, get the rendering up and then go to a photo.
Sorry about that, guys. The area is all low density residential. All areas around this house are low density residential, same zoning as, as the subject property. Yeah.
So this is a photo from a couple of weeks ago, and Hope and I visited the site. So the addition would be in the front area of the house here. So this is the existing garage will be converted to the living unit. Then I'd bump this out, as Hope describes in the stamp memo with a new garage.
And the picture you see now is a rendering of what it will look like, what the house will look like, uh possibly look like when they build on a new detail, a new attached garage in place of the converted garage into an A D U space. That makes sense. Um, if we just look over the S L U P standards for approval, number one is compatibility with the comprehensive plan. And it, the project definitely aligns with our comprehensive plan to provide for residential development that will address the needs of all segments of the population while preserving existing neighborhoods and providing adequate room for growth. Um, number two is combat compatibility with adjacent uses. It's all residential, so therefore it will all be compatible. Uh, number three is impact on public services. Uh, we do not anticipate that the addition of this A D U will negatively impact facility, uh, facilities or services or impact on services. It'll be, it should be nominal. Um, impact on the overall environment. The proposed A D, A D U will not negatively impact the natural environment, public health, safety, or welfare of the community. Traffic impact, uh, no significant traffic impacts are anticipated at this time, as it is just one single person that will be living in that space. Uh, operational characteristics, uh, the project is a single family dwelling and the proposed A D U will not be obvious from the street once complete because they are adding on that addition, that, that garage addition in front of the existing. So it'll pretty much look the same. Um, outdoor operations, any outdoor activities will be similar to those that are already existing at the home. Compliance with the zoning ordinance. The project, uh, the proposed project meets the stated intent of the R B zoning district, which is to provide for low density residential development consistently primary, consisting primarily of single family detached dwellings. Okay. We're gonna go down to the actual A D U standards of approval, the specific ones for the A D U now. Uh, number one says the units shall be separate housekeeping units and shall not exceed fifty percent of the floor area of the primary or of the principal residence. The proposed A D U is connected to the primary dwelling via a wall that serves as a separation from the rest of the home. The current primary residence is one thousand six hundred and forty three square feet in size. The five hundred and thirty six square foot A D U would be thirty three percent of the floor area, so it meets the less than fifty percent. When the proposed new attached garage is built, it will add an additional six hundred and thirty three square feet, which will bring the new square footage of the home to two thousand two hundred and seventy six square feet. At that time, the five hundred and thirty six square feet uh A D U will be twenty four percent of the total floor plan of the dwelling. So it'll, it'll definitely meet that stated requirement. Uh, number two, only one accessory dwelling unit permit permitted per lot or parcel. They're only proposing one, so it meets that, no problem. Number three, the owners of the principal residence shall continue to occupy the prin, the principal residence. Makes sense. The, the applicant has, has indicated to staff that the property owners will continue to occupy the, the, the residence. Um, staff is not aware of any pending sale of the property. Number four, accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by no more than three persons. These persons must be related to the owners or occupants of the principal residence by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship. Uh, the S L, S L U P application indicates that one person, the owner's mother, will reside in the A D U. All setbacks, number five, all setbacks and lot coverage of the district shall be met. Um, even with the expansion, with the addition of another garage, it still meets all the setbacks just fine for the zoning district. It's a good sized lot. Uh, number six, minimum of one additional off-street parking space shall be provided for the accessory dwelling unit. Um, I did some, some math figuring of numbers and the current driveway fits approximately eight cars. Once the new attached garage is built, the driveway will fit approximately six cars. The applicant has stated that no more than three cars are expected to be parked in the driveway at any time. So they'll have, still have plenty of space. Um, most of the conditions of approval are pretty standard. There are a few that I wanted to make note of. Um, the conditions of approval, number three, prior to a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall add a restriction to the deed of the property reflecting the restrictions of the A D U as identified in section eight oh, eight point zero two B of the zoning ordinance to inform future owners. The language of the deed restriction is subject to final approval by the zoning administrator. That's not one that we hear very often, so we just wanna make sure you are aware of that one as well. Um, number four, any expansion of the A D U shall require approval of an amendment to the S L U P. That is pretty standard, but still wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that one. Number five, the excel, accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by not more than three persons or by the number of persons permitted under the building code, whichever is fewer. And then number six, the accessory dwelling unit shall only be occupied by those persons related to the owners or occupants of the principal residence by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship. The rest of the conditions of approval are pretty standard.
Keep the location map updated, just keep it as a default.
Okay, thank you for all the information, Hope. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Do I have a motion?
We get to open a public hearing.
Well, I was gonna wait till we have a motion and, and a support, but.
Oh, you have motion to open a public hearing?
Oh. Yeah, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? I'm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Most. So anyone here that would like to speak on this subject? Uh, approach the podium, uh, state your name and your address, please.
Hello. My name is Damian Lindsay and I live uh in six one one seven Willow Highway in Grand Ledge. And I'm the owner of this home.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, basically, I, I just wanted to clarify one thing. I mean, if you have any other questions for me, she needed really good job, fix, and everything, so it's probably straightforward. But um, as far as, you said there would have to be like a, um, a change to the deed. Can you explain that again?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure, okay.
What, well, what we do is we will record typically, what we've been doing, we've only done a handful of these, we'll record our approval letter on your deed and that will, to us, it'll, it'll help future owners catch that this is a requirement. So the, the, this unit would be limited to only family members. So the idea with us recording it on the deed is that it would come up in a title search, should you ever sell the home, and so the future owners will know that that restriction is in place. It won't impact your property or your any other legal status of the property.
Okay, understood. And then, um, um, one other thing. As far as, uh, if this is approved, I don't have a contractor currently. I'm just curious like how long this would be good for if it were approved.
Yeah, two years.
I was gonna ask your timeline, so that they.
Okay.
You'll have two, is it two years from the date of approval? To execute this, to, to start construction, not commence the project? And then you could do one year ex, extension through my office.
Understood, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um. Oh, Peter, now, when, when we had the deed restrictions put on there, that was a protection that somebody couldn't buy the home and then put that as a rental unit, correct?
Correct.
Cor, correct, yeah, that, that's correct.
That was the.
The reason I thought the deed is really just to help, help other people know that this is, this is out there. Uh, we don't have a very good way to ensure that everybody knows, I mean, that the property owner will know. But we don't have any other good way to advertise that these restrictions are on the unit, so this is our, kind of my best attempt at trying to memorialize it in something where people would find it.
I'm sure the neighbors will.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the rumor mill and neighbors always help us, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Questions for.
Um, just a comment. I wanna commend Mr. Lindsay for this innovative approach, you know, for taking care of, uh, your mother. I know that, um, senior housing and assisted living is very expensive these days. So, um, I'm gonna take this example and pass it on to my kids and, uh, see if they will follow through on this in the years ahead.
There you go.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for clarification for me, please. Uh, Peter, am I understanding, is this gonna be a separate entrance or the enter through the main entrance of the home?
Hope, can you speak to the, yeah, Dale pull up the floor plan and Hope can speak to the details of that.
Yeah, it's easier to explain on the, on the, on the floor plan because it's, it's kind of, they will have their own separate entrance in the back. And then there's like a little hallway off to the rip right there. And it looks like another entrance going into when they do the new notch.
Okay, I did, I looked at that and it just wasn't clear.
It, yeah, I, I had to look at it for a minute myself originally.
If you were to sell the home, how do you list that? You added another bedroom to the description or how does that work?
I don't think there's an official way that has to be done. Um, you could call it, I mean, a, a family that just wanted to use that space as another bedroom could certainly use it that way. Um, because it's a pretty special use case to find another family that has parents that wanna live there. Uh, so it could be used just for a family to occupy the space. Or, I mean, it could be used for another family that wants to use the same, use it the same way. We would just need some kind of I haven't run into that yet, but I would need some kind of documentation that they would fit our ordinance.
Okay, so if it's currently a three bedroom home and it were to be sold, it would be listed as a three bedroom with a mother-in-law.
I don't know if there's an official way it has to be done. I think you could list it as three, three or four bedroom.
Okay.
Right, depending on this scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, maybe I just don't see it. I'm, I'm looking for heating and coolings.
So, um, the idea here was to put probably mini splits there. I have, um, like, I have a boiler and I've got, um, A C up in my attic, so th, this would have to be separated, so.
Tap into that existing.
Yeah, it'd be too complicated too, so we'd have to do mini splits.
Any other further comments or questions from commission members? Any other further comments from anyone else?
Nothing from me.
Move the, close the public hearing, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
And will we vote to approve or deny the request? So, but.
There, there should be a. Yeah, risks.
Yeah.
I'm with the planning commission, recommend the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit request for around to its services, Inc., to convert the attached garage into a five hundred and thirty six square foot accessory dwelling unit at six one one seven Willow Highway. Support. Discreting case P S L twenty twenty five zero zero four. Okay, then we'll just say. Do you want the rest? Conditions and. Okay. Nine, alright. With the following for the following reasons, the special land use standards set forth in section seven dot oh three of the zoning ordinance has been met. The specific use standards of necessary dwelling units in section eight dot oh two of the zoning ordinance have been met. The property is appropriately located in a, in a R B zoning district, which allows for accessory dwelling units to be approved for a special land use permit with the following conditions of approval. Approval is granted in accordance.
Bob, sorry, dear, if you could just say the following nine conditions if you don't.
With the following, I, I'll say it out of record.
Yeah.
With the following nine conditions attached in the documents.
Or eight, or yes, eight, sorry.
Eight. Yep, eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I support that.
Hey, boot and supported any additional discussion? Okay, if not, this is a roll call, right, Robert?
Yes, yes, it is. And we'll struggle you, glacier. Yes, chairman, yes. Robert Donald.
Uh, support.
Support. Mark Mudry.
Support.
David Howell.
Yes.
Support. Mary Anna Hunt Proctor.
Support.
Support. And myself, Bob Walden supports. Passes. So, uh, any further direction to the requested? Just what's the next step, so we know?
The next step will be, um, to, that it will, you'll go before the, the township board. On, I don't know what date it is, but I'll let you.
November eight or September.
September eight, but I will email you and let you know all of that as well. You, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and you can stay or you can go.
Yes. Good night.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, would you introduce the next item of business?
Yes, the next, uh, item is special land use permit, P S L twenty twenty five dash zero zero three. Colliers Engineering and Design establish a vehicle repair facility at thirty three oh nine South Kreitz Road.
That's me as well. Okay. Sorry, Dave's trying to get a good picture of, of the location where we're, we're gonna be speaking about for the next two items. Um, before us tonight, we have Colliers Engineering and Design who are with us in the audience and they are seeking a special land use permit approval on behalf of their client Meyer Distribution, Inc. To construct a new twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty square foot vehicle repair building at three three oh nine South Kreitz Road. The scope of the project also includes removing and replacing concrete, updating stormwater and utility connections, and relocating a shed that is currently on the parcel. The subject parcel is a fifteen acre site, which has an existing, um, fleet maintenance building that is approximately forty six thousand square feet. The specific parcel involved in the request is, is part of a much larger, of course, Meyer Distribution complex that includes approximately three hundred contiguous acres. Uh, the proposed new building will be adjacent to an existing vehicle repair building that was constructed in nineteen seventy three. The new building will be used to complete basic maintenance of fleet vehicles such as oil changes, truck washing, and general maintenance. All maintenance will be conducted inside the new building. The fleet maintenance building is classified as a vehicle repair building, which is allowed in the industrial zoning district, subject to approval of an S L U P. A site plan review application for this project is being reviewed concurrently after this. Um, the surrounding area is all industrial, uh, with one little blip on the, to the other map. The zoning map for this. Sorry, there's one little, there is one little O office parcel. It's owned by Meyer as well, so it's not that big of a deal, but I just want to point it out. I wrote it, so. Um, the S L U P standards of approval for the, the basic S L U P standards, we don't have a whole lot of, um, concerns about. You'd see it's that, it's that little, little parcel right there that is blue, that is office. Um, but everything else around it is all industrial. The S L U P standards of appraisal, approval, compatibility with comprehensive plan, it's industrial, that whole area is industrial, future land use map is industrial. So it definitely is compatible with comprehensive plan. Uh, compatibility with adjacent uses. The subject parcel is, is industrial, everything around it's industrial. Um, impact on public services. The property is developed and currently served by public utilities. The submitted plan is under review by the engineering and utility departments to assess and negate any potential impacts. Impact on the overall environment. Uh, the new building is not expected to produce excessive traffic noise, uh, smoke odor, smoke odors, I can't say that. Smoke odors or other such nuances in comparison to the already existing industrial developments. Further, the noise ordinance does not apply in industrial zoning districts. Traffic impact. Um, no significant traffic impacts are anticipated. The development project does not require a traffic study as it is an existing use already at the facility. Operational characteristics. Um, the nature and character activities, processes, materials, equipments, or conditions of operation, either specifically or typically associated with use shall be reviewed. Uh, we have reviewed. Negative impacts are not anticipated from the construction of this new fleet services building. All activities related to the repair services will occur inside the building. Outdoor operations, um, the applicant has stated that the outdoor operations will consist of parking and driving the semi truck tractors in and out of the building for repairs. These activities are already occurring on the property and are compatible with adjacent industrial zoned properties. Compliance with zoning ordinance standards. It's industrial, it's in compliance. And vehicle repair is in compliance with industrial as well. Um, we now move on to special land use. The actual one specific to vehicle repair standards, section eight point six one. Access, primary access to the subject parcel shall be on a county primary road as classified by the Eaton County Road Commission or state trunk line under the jurisdiction of the Michigan Department of Transportation. The applicant has provided a site plan that shows access to the site from Millet Highway that dead ends into the building, into that whole parking area. Also access via Kreitz Road. Um, outdoor storage, dismantled, wrecked, or inoperable vehicles awaiting repair stored outdoors shall be within an enclosed, an area enclosed by an opaque fence or wall with a minimum of six feet in height. Wire fences with inserted strips of metal, plastic, or similar materials shall not be permitted. Uh, the submitted site plan shows that the repair building is located internally to the existing buildings and has screening in place already. Um, next one is screening. Um, staff is not, not requiring additional screening at this time for the new building. Um, the applicant has offered that any additional screening requirements will be met if deemed necessary by the township board. Disposal containers. Uh, Meyer Distribution, Inc., will be required to follow proper procedure for the storage and disposal of all supplies and discharges. Uh, next is repair and maintenance activities. Re, repair and maintenance activities, including hydraulic hoists, lubrication pits, and similar activities shall be performed entirely within an enclosed building. All maintenance activities will occur within the proposed building, at least to our knowledge. Um, front setback restrictions, the applicant has provided a site plan that shows the proposed location of the new building is not within the front setbacks of the property. It's quite, quite a ways from the road, quite a ways from Millet Highway as well. Uh, that's not the good one. Uh, that's not the good one. Um, okay, so we'll go back to, he's trying to find a good picture to show where that shows, but I'll keep going. Vehicle sales and leasing, vehicle sales and leasing are not planned functions of the proposed building. And we have some, we have three prohibited uses, and the prohibited uses are convenience stores, salvage yards, and auction sales. The applicant has stated on behalf of their client Meyer Distribution, Inc. That none of the prohibited uses are planned for the proposed development. Um, the conditions of approval are pretty straightforward on this one. None that we've are concerned with or want special attention. Oh, that's. Okay, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the commissioners, uh, have any questions for Hope regarding this matter?
Is this built in, in addition to the existing or to replace the existing?
In addition.
Okay, I wasn't, I didn't quite catch that.
Maybe the, maybe the Google Earth.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
The building will be right where those trucks are lined up right now, where Dave's got.
There you go, there it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
So the area already, where they're building already has, uh, an impermeable surface, so we're not.
Yes.
Have any additional concerns about drainage and that sort of thing, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, plus they're planning to, Dave, if you could zoom out just a little bit, and I'm sure they have, can speak more to this, but they are planning on enhancing their drainage with the, the facility there to the south that is, uh, blocked in by that parking lot there.
Okay. Okay.
So if they're building the building where the trucks currently are, where will the trucks go?
Yep, the trucks will actually be being relocated, I don't know, south.
South, yeah, we, so, so we did an amendment.
Yep.
Yeah, can you walk through the amendment real briefly?
Yep, so we did a, um, yes, keep going, Dave, there you go. So right there where the, where the cursor was just a second ago, up. Yep, that, that, that salt shed is no longer in existence. So all those trucks that are there on the top screen now are going to be relocated to that area. Um, that's where they're moving the heating blocks and whatnot to keep the trucks warm in the winter. And that was done, um, via an admin review of, of the, of that plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything further? And do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So will.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter?
Yes.
Uh, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
The address. Uh, Jennifer Smith with Colliers Engineering and Design on behalf of, um, Rockford Construction and also Meyer. Um, our address is right down the road. Seventy one fifty, so right down, right down Saginaw. Um, I'm here if you have any questions. Oh, I think Hope, you know, covered it pretty well. Um, the existing building that was built in seventy three is currently doing what we are proposing right now. It's just not keeping up because it, that was nineteen seventy three, the fleet has expanded. They need more bays for maintenance for washing is basically what they're going to be doing, so. That's why Meyer has requested a new twenty thousand square foot, um, building.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? No?
Thank you.
Close the public hearing.
Hey, support.
All those in favor closing public hearing?
Sign off the same guy. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
I can get it out. Uh, I move the Planning Commission recommends to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of a special land use permit. Request from Collier Engineering and Design to establish a vehicle repair, to establish a vehicle repair facility at thirty three oh nine South Kreitz Road. Parcel number zero forty dash oh twenty six dash three hundred dash oh thirty one dash zero zero. As described in case number PSL number twenty twenty five dash zero zero three. For the following reasons, of which there are two, with the following conditions of approval, which there are five.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? If not, if the secretary would call.
Mr. Kaczynski? Yes.
Yes. Vice Chair, Mariana?
Yes.
Secretary Walden, DS? Mr. Mudry, Christopher Mudry?
Yes.
Commissioner McDon, McDon?
Uh, support.
And Commissioner Howell?
Support.
Passes.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next steps for the applicant?
We got one more for them to go, but Planning Commission, it'll be township board, but we'll be in touch.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
The next item is under other business, uh, if you would introduce that, Mr. Commissioner.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Uh, other business, site plan review, PFSP twenty twenty five zero 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 nine. Colliers Engineering Design, construction of a new twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty foot fleet maintenance building at thirty three oh nine Kreitz Road. Parcel number zero four zero dash two dash zero two six dash three zero zero dash zero three one dash zero zero. Thank you.
Okay. I am not going to reread everything that I just read. Um, I do have some notes that, uh, a few things that we'll go over, okay? I will try and keep it short. Public utilities, we've already kind of gone over. Lighting, site lighting is exempt from regulation in the industrial zoning district. Therefore, no photometric plan is provided or required. Okay, um, parking, parking is always a hot topic. Uh, the project site has an employee parking lot located just south of the proposed new building. The parking lot has two hundred and ten standard parking spaces, seven accessible parking spaces, as well as forty one designated truck parking spaces, so much larger spaces.
Dave, pull a picture of the photo, the parking up for us, we can see what she's talking of. I would pull up the Google map.
Oh, yeah.
Um, section eleven point zero one C seven establishes a maximum amount of parking that can be constructed for any given site. However, industrial sites are exempt. So they can have as much as they want, and Meyer has a lot, for good reason. Um, okay, so you need to, um, scroll down a little bit.
South is where the.
There you go. That's, this is the employee parking lot. Um, there's a lot of spaces in there, and it is, it is a secured lot. You can't just, you can get into it, but you can't like go into the building or anything, you have to go through a checkpoint. It is a, so it is a secure lot. Scroll one. Okay, so, um, I'm going to skip down to number five of our, uh, review criteria, which is all buildings or groups of buildings shall be arranged to prevent necessary emergency vehicle access as required by the fire department. Um, the site plan shows a twenty four foot wide access lane, if, Dave, if you could go to that page. In the plans, or. So there's another page for that one, sorry. Um, so the, it does show that there is a twenty four foot wide act, twenty four foot wide access lane around the building, which meets the minimum standard under the zoning ordinance. The fire department has reviewed the plans and has identified a need for an additional hydrant to be installed on the west side of the building. Um, this concern has been submitted to Colliers, and, um, any future comments or additional comments that, that the fire department comes up with, we will make sure is addressed and included in their approval letter. There it is. It's not, it's not the, it's, yeah, it's kind of hard to read, but that's what, that's the fire lanes. Or that's the truck turning lane. The fire lane is the next one. Collier sent us a lot of good pictures. You just got to make sure that's the, that's the fire lane. So this one shows the actual fire lanes around the building, and definitely have more than twenty four foot access all the way around the building. Uh, the need for the additional fire hydrant is in the, uh, lower southern, western part of the corner of the area. Yes, right around where his mouse is, that's perfect. Um, duh, 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 duh. Site access and circulation. The proposed building is located on a parcel that the general public cannot access due to it being a secure facility. The employees of, of the facility have a seven foot wide sidewalk to access the facility via the employee parking lot that we showed you earlier. No new streets are being, being proposed, no new driveways are being proposed. Um, no new sidewalks along the outer edges of the parcel are being proposed. Um, utility plan is under review by the engineering departments and utility departments. We have not received any comment back from them as of yet. Um, stormwater facilities, those are being reviewed by Eaton County Drain Office, and we have not received any comments back from them yet either. Uh, we will make sure to include those. Du, du, du. Uh, the fire department, uh, sites which include storage of hazardous waste, fuels, salt, or chemicals will be designed to prevent spills and discharges of pollution materials to the surface or the air or to the ground or groundwater. Uh, the fire department chemical survey has been completed by the owners and submitted to the Delta Township Fire Department for review. I have not received any comments back on that as of yet. That will be, we will make sure all that falls in line as well. Um, landscaping is next, we're not asking for any additional landscaping at this time. Uh, the site plan will comply with all applicable township ordinances and any other applicable laws, of course. Um, for the conditions of approval, there's nothing that sticks out as unusual, uh, on this one either, there is, this is all pretty standard.
The only thing for the applicant's attention that I would note is that this is first fate, the first step in our site plan review process, so. First step is planning commission approval, and then you work with our staff and including fire department, engineering, and utilities, um, and to get final site plan review, so that would come with a letter from me.
Yes.
Any comments, questions for Hope? From the best of my recollection, uh, we don't formally approve site plans, correct?
Oh, we do approve.
It's just a.
Approve passing it out?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's just a voiceful.
So, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the Planning Commission approve the site plan to construct a new twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty square foot vehicle repair building at thirty three oh nine South Kreitz Road. Parcel number zero four zero zero two six three zero 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 three one zero zero, subject to the following conditions, of which there are seven.
Ten.
Ten, ten, I'm sorry, there are ten. Thank you.
Support.
Well, supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Most carries. Okay. Thank you. Hey, that takes us on to the twenty twenty five master plan progress report.
Okay, I'll take that one. So, all right, thanks for the opportunity to go over the master plan here. It's been an eventful summer, and we are getting closer to, I won't say getting the document done, but getting, we're moving along in the process. So just a status report here. This process started with the open house that was held that first week of August, so thanks to you that were able to make it out to that event. It was at the Delta Township Library, and it was very well attended. It was a very general event, kind of an intro to the master plan process. There were some stations set up around the room that were intended to provide public input on a variety of topics that would inform the consultant team working on the plan. So, um, I mean, from our perspective, it was, I thought it was really well attended, more people than we expected. And we had more people just from, I think, the library venue itself, but people kind of curious about what we were up to and veering off and coming to see us, so that went really well. Um, that event marked the kickoff of a community survey that went through yesterday. So it was open for a month, and we got approximately five hundred responses, so some, within, talking with the consultant about that this morning, some people, uh, opened the survey and fill out some of the questions, some of them fill out most of the questions. Not everybody always fills out all of the questions, so at least five hundred of them were like a major, they got a majority of the questions responded to. So I don't know what the expectation was, I think five hundred's a good number, it seemed like we had pretty good, um, response rate on that.
Great.
So pleased with that, and the township, big props to our township team for putting, you know, we have so many different channels of communication. We're really fortunate, um, at Delta, they have a really robust email list that goes out to thousands of people. And, uh, the Facebook page gets a lot of hits and responses. So, um, our colleague Mary Worland in the manager's office really went above and beyond in making sure that that be the regular, um, pushing of that material out to people. And I think it really helped, and it would be remiss and not noting that Sarah put it on next door, you know, action there as well. Have to mention that.
Have to.
Um, so the, we had, and then in the month of August, we had three focus groups, the last of which concluded last week. So they were community mobility, business, economic development, and safe and healthy communities. Those were, um, attended fairly well for probably what you would expect from those groups. We had, I don't know, but at the last one, I think maybe ten people, and at the most, we had fifteen for one of the other ones. So, uh, those were small invite-only groups that were facilitated by the master plan consultant. She asked, uh, she had a worksheet and some kind of probing leading questions that were intended to provoke some discussion on different topics. And I, I thought they went really well. Um, so it was an opportunity for people to kind of share in a non-open public environment, and to be a little more, I think, not truthful, but, uh, liberated to, to say how they feel about things. So, um, they, they went really well, and in terms of the number of people that were invited, we had good response rates of those that were invited. The, to attend those meetings, so. All of that is being, um, evaluated, documented, counted, analyzed by the consultant team right now. And they will present the responses on the public input, as well as some elements of the draft plan, likely including a draft future land use map at the October fifteenth public event that's scheduled for the Lansing Mall. I'll send you all, uh, an email about that as well, but for now, planning on October fifteenth, I want to get the time exactly right. But it's during the day at the mall. The, um, steering committee meets again on September twenty fifth at ten AM here in Township Hall. What we're expecting at that meeting are responses to some of the feedback from the first chapter, and I'm hoping to dra, a draft chapter, and then a discussion on future land use map. And they may, at that point, have those objectives prepared for consideration. So, yeah, we're moving ahead, this process has to be completed by the end of the year. The master plan doesn't have to be adopted, and I, it will not be adopted, I don't, I don't think we should expect that the master plan will be adopted, but the document will be done enough so that we can turn the housing portion over to Mishda for, uh, to, to acquire those dollars in the grant that we are, that we applied for and received. So that's fifty thousand dollars to Mishda. That is, covers the housing portion of the document specifically. So it, it really worked out well for us because the plan this year, or, I don't know if it's this year or last year, the Planning Enabling Act was updated to require a housing review in master plans anyways. So this was very timely, so we're able to check that box and also fulfill the, what is needed for the grant through Mishda, so, and to save some money in the, in, along the way. So that's a master plan update, anyone have any questions on where we are, where we're going, expectations moving forward?
Um, one thing, Peter, is, uh, I thought that the, uh, the.
What I think, Peter, is, uh, I thought that the, uh, the library, uh, response was very good. And I want to thank staff for manning those stations and leading us all around.
That was fun.
Yeah.
We got to talk to a lot of people.
We did.
Now, now in the survey, okay, I think some people were turned off because they thought it was going to be a, a multiple choice and they had to author s- some comments, okay? So that, um, hopefully that they, um, they clicked on and saw what it was, clicked off and then thought about it and then went, went back in. But, uh, that's just my observation.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to make one comment. I attended two of the focus groups and, um, I think the consultants did a really good job getting, um, the right people, you know, the right organizations into those focus groups because, um, I went, you know, I went there with, with an open mind and I learned a lot. Um, from all those organizations, they spoke to, you know, what their organization did and what the interface was with Delta Township. And, um, it was a, it was a nice open forum. The meetings were really well run. So I just think the consultants, this consultant group, you know, should be commended for, um, the way that they handled, um, the focus groups.
Thank you. We will pass that along.
Any further comments?
I know it's, it's, you don't have a formal analysis yet. Uh, any sense of anything that's emerged?
Not from any of the public input, no, it's all too new. They're, they're, they're doing all that right now, putting together some themes. But we will, yeah, we'll share that as soon as it becomes available and we'll need a lot of eyes on these documents, particularly the, the future land use map moving forward. Just to be aware, there's kind of a concurrent effort. I also work with, we work with law boards and commissions, but I also work with the Corridor Improvement Authority. And that is the, so I, I think everybody knows, but if you don't, it's a, a group that, um, that we have a corridor improvement authority. It runs from Broadbent to Waverly and it's a focus just on the parcels that have fronted John West Saginaw. So that group is interested in looking at future land use, particularly on the east side. They've been most engaged on this West Saginaw, um, MDOT proposed project that's going to happen in the next couple of years. But they've also have, um, wanted, started discussions about kind of visioning for the eastern part of the township on West Saginaw because it doesn't get as much attention with a lot of the newer businesses in this area. So that's going to be a particular, so I'm kind of walking them, I brought them on, um, to review the areas along West Saginaw and I'll do the same for this group. So our GIS person is preparing some maps that I'll plan to have for this group. You meet just to look at the existing uses along the corridor, what the current future land use map has, properties designated as, and then looking forward to see what might we change. Not suggesting there's anything needs to be changed, but what are some areas maybe where the future land use map doesn't align with the land use or with the previous designation? Or maybe it's an area that this group or other groups in the community vision entirely different from when they did back in. I know the plan was adopted in twenty thirteen, but the public input for that plan started, you know, a year before that. So we're going back quite a bit of time here. So much, so much has changed since twenty twelve, so. But just, so you know, they're, they're, they're having a specific focus on the corridor, but this, the planning commission would be looking at the township as a whole.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, additional project updates, Peter, you?
Um, we don't have anything right now for the, the group, no follow-ups on previous projects. But I'm open to any questions, anything I have.
Yeah, my only comment is I drove by today and I suspect everybody else has driven by and noticed that the, the old high school is about half or more gone. So, you know, it's too bad. I'm going to miss that building. I love the architecture in that building.
We start to see the, start to see the hole that's behind it.
Yeah, I got an update on that, Doug. Uh, Spicer says that they're going to be working on the roof of the old school. Probably in next week or the week after. And they said that the people working on the roof are going to be in full hazmat suits. Don't freak out. This is, this is how they do it.
Yep.
And, uh, what you see there is, uh, they're separating the metal from the other stuff. And, um, so things are progressing pretty good. If, if you go up on, um, Waverly by the river, they've got the big pipe all stacked up.
That's going to be a little crazy when they start, uh, that digging up there.
Oh, yeah.
They're taking what, two of the lanes out of Waverly.
For updated info on that project, it's www.bankdrain.org and they are pretty good about keeping it updated. Because there are going to be some travel, lane closure related to that project at some point here. And they've got maps on the website to show what, what's planned and when.
But with the school, it's going to, once they get to a certain point, it's going to move very quickly. Thank you.
Okay, we have no public, so, uh, no public comments. Anything additional, Peter?
Um, nothing from our office. No, thank you.
Hey, any additional comments from planning commissioners? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.
Jeez, Doug, you woke me up.